Thank you for that.
That's good to know.
Boring or good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Tom, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Osmo.
Present.
Shusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Obala. We have a quorum, your honor.
All right, now bear with me on this. Need a motion for the agenda additions, but let me highlight the additions. We also are adding to the agenda Representative Patty Mueller, she'll follow Senator Doran. And then we are on the work session, we are removing Mr. Lang's discussion on Fourth Street Northwest Traffic. We're adding back on the downtown Boulevard Tree discussion. I believe that's it. So with those moves, we will, I'll take a motion to approve. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Looking for a motion, right? Number two is approving the minutes from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Number three, under recognition and awards. Something really near and dear to my heart. I was, I'm sure everybody is in agreement on the council. Sure, everybody's in agreement that live in Austin, that a special conference room, we don't often, I don't think we ever have named a conference room after anybody. And I just, knowing Bonnie and Bonnie Reed's former mayor and who she was and who she continues to be, absolutely deserves a room in this building, I believe, named after her, and a conference room seemed appropriate. I, Jeff asked, you know, which room is it going to be down here? Well, I figured on the main corridor would be a great spot. So Conference Room B, which sounds really innocuous. I think will hopefully now become the Bonnie Room. So I met with Bonnie today. Chief McKegan came with me as a friend and happened to interrupt a conversation she was having with former mayor Tom Steam. And my, I wanted her to hear it from me before she read in the newspaper, because I'm sure Eric Johnson is very thorough. It's reporting, it'll get out there. But it means a great deal to me. Just again, Bonnie has served the city so well and continues to do it where she has every right to walk away and think job well done. So I think the special recognition is perfect for her. I told her with Tom there, I said, Bonnie will forever be the mayor of Austin. Everybody that precedes her will be a placeholder, me included. And there's no doubt, she is just has that status. And so I'm going to read this resolution, then hopefully you agree with me that this is quite an honor deserving of Bonnie. So a resolution dedicating the Bonnie Best Reeds Conference Room. I learned that today, that it's not Bessie, it's Bass. Whereas Bonnie Best Reeds selflessly devoted eighteen years of her life to public service in the city of Austin as a council member, then the mayor. Whereas Bonnie has been an excellent representative of the city at both the local and statewide levels as president of the League of Minnesota Cities, Apex Drug Task Force, Austin's Area Symphony, Austin Area Commission for the Arts, and many others. And whereas Bonnie has continued to be involved in many community projects and causes after her term as mayor, and whereas Bonnie leads with energy enthusiasm and professionalism. And whereas Bonnie exhibited the highest level of statesmanship and has excelled in the, as an advocate for consensus and cooperation among the diverse political, social, and cultural groups of the city of Austin. And whereas she has taken great care to facilitate meaningful conversations in many conference rooms across the city and region. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Austin does hereby dedicate the Bonnie Best Reeds Conference Room in honor of her faithful dedication to the community. And with that, I would certainly entertain a resolution or further discussion on that resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, Tom, I guess that's a resolution. So, oh no, it would be a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, it's a resolution.
You read it as a resolution.
Did I?
It's a resolution.
Okay. All right, resolution then.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Okay. And I think once the sign is ordered and put up, we'll have more of a celebratory.
Oh, yeah.
Grand opening of that room for Bonnie and just a little more celebration. So thank everybody for that. Also, the CRE folks are here. And we'll maybe introduce them.
After Mueller.
After Mueller. Okay, very good. So with that, we have, we have some dignitaries here. Senator Doran and Representative Mueller are both here to kind of, you know, tell us what's going on, maybe a little bit, and take some questions if you will. So Senator Doran, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Administrator Clark, and city council members. So this was a different year. Of course, it's my first term, so everything was different with the COVID nineteen. So the experience I and Representative Mueller experienced was a new one. So, but I'm just going to do the highlights because I don't want to spend a lot of time. You guys are busy. So got to remember Minnesota is the only legislative body that's split. So we have to come together, which is not always easy. And so to get, the biggest thing we need to do was the budget. And so before you can do the budget, you got to have targets. And so what happened this year is they didn't get the targets till like it was the day before the session was going to end. So then we had to go into extra innings or the extra session. So, so we did complete the, got all the, the budget was completed. That was the biggest thing that we needed to get done was the budget for all those committees. So it was a fifty-two billion dollar budget, and it's a two-year cycle. So now next year it'll be a policy year. And the big things that we need to do next year basically is bonding, hopefully getting a bonding bill, and there's sometimes policy and then redistricting. So that's the three things that there can be bills to, but that's kind of the big, big three things that we need to get done. So with bonding, I'm on the bonding committee or capital investment, it's sometimes called also. So we've been going around throughout the state and they do it in sections. So we have five trips and we've done three so far. So we did the Southwest last week and the Southeast will be coming up in November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. So Austin with the wastewater treatment plant that you guys have been working on for quite some time, that definitely we're going to be stopping in to see either that or otherwise they'll just give a presentation. And then with Albert Lee, they have the dredging project is one of the big projects they have, and they're almost done with that. So I'm sure we'll stop over there. And then there's other communities throughout. There's usually, we made about forty stops, six hundred miles in the last week. So that's kind of the big thing that I'm involved in is the bonding tour. Like I say, it'll be in November, and then there'll be one in Minneapolis, St. Paul in January, which we picked that one because of the snow. We want to get the more of the rural areas done before the snow comes. And the other thing is that's going on yet is the frontline workers that they're trying to get past, the working groups trying to get an agreement. That's been a real struggle. I'm not on that. So other than, you know, they're continuing to keep working. And I did get to meet with a administrator for one of the nursing homes today and just, we all know, and I got to see firsthand as we went through there, the, just the close to crisis that they have of not being able to get enough help and being understaffed, and then they can't have as many patients or as they would like. So. I think that's about all I'm going to talk about unless you guys have any questions. And then I just really want to invite you to call me or if you want to have coffee, lunch, or whatever, and we can go deeper if you have questions. But I appreciate the time and I don't want to take up too much of your time because you have other business. So thank you, Mayor, and council members for the opportunity if you're.
Senator, on behalf of the city, I just really appreciate your responsiveness to us. You know, your willingness to show Austin to your fellow bonding members, especially our wastewater treatment plant that, as you very well know, is super important to Austin. I appreciate you fighting for us on those, on that particular item.
Thank you, and you're welcome. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Senator? All right, we'll stop by any time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Representative Mueller, welcome.
Mayor and city administrator and council members, thank you so much for giving me a chance to spontaneously come and just give you a quick update. As the senator already said, that we've been definitely doing a lot of learning through our, through our first year, and it has been a really trying first year, but also really joyful in the sense that we've been, I feel like we've been doing as much as we can to make sure to get your priorities up at the Capitol. I have a couple of things that I wanted to talk to you about as I have been working on through the first year of my, of the term, but also through this summer. And I've been talking to several of you during the summer. The first, first thing I was working on this summer is working on how we can get our kids out of the classroom through apprenticeships. As I've talked to businesses around the community, they are looking at how we can give more opportunities to our students, not just through CEO, which is a fantastic program, but also that we are able to get some of the students that maybe will go to Riverland or will, will go straight into the workforce right away. How can we get them apprenticeships so that we can, it can count for both high school and college credit at the same time? There's a really amazing program called Steel Co Works, and I was aware of it from Councilman Postma. And, and so that has been really interesting. And we talked about that with the, with the chamber, still things up in the air, but that's been definitely a priority for me. Second is our family childcare opportunities. Councilman Obala was the first one that came and talked to me about that. And so I've been working with both the family childcare providers about how we can use the Childcare Modernization Act that we passed through the HHS budget this past year to streamline licensure and inspection. So it's easier for people of the ethnic community, not only to enter into the business, but who have more options for their children to have childcare. I've been working with Smith and with Austin Aspires on how we can maybe possibly provide CPR classes for our ethnic community and also get them into some workshops to help them walk through the process of becoming licensed childcare providers. That, so at the same time, while we're trying to streamline the process, I'm also trying to get them information to get them through the process. And Smith has been generous at being able to provide the funds for that. And that should be happening pretty, I think it's actually on Wednesday that I'm having my first initial meeting. So I'm really excited about that. On October fifteenth, I had the privilege of meeting with Mayor King and Chief McKeegan and Sheriff Stanvik and several other people from our law enforcement agents, agencies about the alternatives to incarceration program, which is something that would allow nonviolent repeat offenders who are drug, who struggle with drug addiction and with mental illness, that instead of being put into prison, that they would have other opportunities for them. We had a really interesting conversation over some really amazing food at El Marate's, and it was really good to hear their input about that, especially with the intake system, how it would be really important for us to address that. This, if Mauer is included, all I have to do is just make the bill. But if it is passed and we are put in this, it is actually in statute that Mauer County would receive a hundred and sixty thousand dollars each year, which would go to whatever you guys kind of decide at the DOC and at the, at the law enforcement areas. And I know Mayor King has some ideas with that, which is really great. And I was really excited to hear about that. The last couple of things, and I'll make them brief because I know that you guys have lots of things, and I appreciate you guys letting me come and talk to you rather spontaneously, is the short call sub bill. I have received several calls from Austin and around Minnesota, how desperate our teachers are for substitute teachers. We are, I mean, I'm getting it all over the place. And since I was on the House Representative's side, I was the chief author, Senator Doran was the author on the, on the Senate side. This bill came from the grassroots area right here in Austin and brought it up to the Capitol. It passed as a standalone bill bipartisanly in the Senate and was blocked in the House. I've had people coming to talk to me several times for the last three weeks, talking about how dire the situation is. And so I've been working kind of behind the scenes with Pelsby, which is a professional licensure board, to see if we can create some sort of an exemption for this year. And I'm also trying to reach across the aisle with majority party to see if we can get this bill passed in twenty twenty-two. It is one of my main priorities, but don't worry, City Administrator Clark, I promise my main priority for bonding has not wavered. It's just that we are, this is a dire need, and it's something that I'm working on right now. We'll see what the response is from Pelsby. And if the response is something other than yes, we will give an exemption, we're really, we're ready to go to the mattresses for you guys. So I'm really excited about that. And finally, is bonding, which is, as the senator talked about, I am not in the, on the bonding committee, but we are really excited. I know that I've talked to City Minister Clark over and over again about how I have talked to the bonding committee on the House side probably every day, and they're super sick of me. But because of that, you guys are on the bonding tour for, for the wastewater treatment plant. We also will be hearing presentations for, from Hormel Institute about the reimaging, for other image bioimaging program that they're doing as well. And I think, Senator, are you on the, on the Senate side? Are you the bill author for the Hormel Institute? So we were the authors on that for the Hormel Institute for Bonding there. So really excited to represent Austin well, and thank you so much. I'll yield for any questions if you have any.
Great work. Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Representative Mueller? No, thank you for coming, and you're always open and welcome to come to our counseling anytime you get a chance. Thank you. Also, we have some folks here from CRE there in the back row. Steve Price, maybe you could step forward and introduce your group. Had the opportunity to meet him last night, and I know they're going to come up with nothing but solutions for Austin, nothing but confidence, and we're looking forward to a great report.
I think you're setting us up.
Steve, introduce your folks, please, and yourself.
Yeah, we're from the outside and we're here to help you. So my name is Steve Price. I'm from Seattle. And we're all members of a group called the Counselors of Real Estate. It's, it's an old and a bit odd group in that we're not specialists. We're not all appraisers or brokers. We've got a wide mix of members in terms of skill sets, in terms of developers, real estate attorneys, financiers, appraisers, brokers. And there's about a thousand members nationwide. So it's fairly, it's invitation only. You have to basically show that you've been in the industry for thirty years and a reasonable number of people like you. And we have a consulting program where entities like, like the city will have us come out and look at a set of real estate problems. And the members ourselves, we volunteer our time for this week when we come out. And then the client, you guys pay our overhead. So. Some of the other projects we've worked on, it's a huge range. We've worked with the Archdiocese, the Archdiocese and Housing Authority in New York City to revamp their property management software. We have another housing-related consulting group that just finished up in Paradise, California, where they had the enormous fire. And they got their infrastructure built back, but now they have no actual houses. And I worked, did a core assignment about three years ago down in Thomasville, Georgia, and we helped the city down there determine how to start talking with the state about a two-hundred acre mental hospital that was being closed down adjacent to them and how to work through the surplus property process and also figure out whether they actually wanted it or not, or whether it was going to be a hassle for them to take that ownership and try to develop something with it. So we've been here for about a day. And we are, we're basically focusing on single-family and multifamily feasibility for new construction. And trying to work with Craig and Holly to give you guys some tools and some metrics and sort of provide a little bit of outside insight as to how your problems are similar to everybody else's problems in the country and then how your problems are different. So. And I will let Wendy introduce herself.
I'm Wendy Tim. I've been a counselor for twenty-five years and practiced in St. Louis actually as a developer. Both as a principal and development consultant. And I've just relocated my, my practice to west of Denver. I live in Sommy County, Colorado, and I work on entitlements for projects. So I've been in, at the die for a lot of these type of meetings. It is very nice to meet you, and I'm very glad to be here.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Kellerman, and I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm a real estate consultant. Real estate attorney and a real estate appraiser, and so there's always something to do. This is my first time to be on a CRE program like this, and I'm just trying to stay out of the way.
Excellent. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here. My name's Doug Prickett. I've been like these gentlemen and ladies, been at this a long time. I'm actually from the investment side. So I work for Transwestern Investments. And we, we buy and develop multifamily office, industrial, some senior housing kind of across the gambit. And I work on strategy. And the reason, the way I came to that is I've spent most of my career figuring out feasibility of what should go where, when, and that means kind of skating to where the puck's going to be. And that's, I think you've got a great, you've got a great landscape here, and we're excited to be here to kind of help look forward in how that housing might shape up over the next ten to twenty years.
And being you're from Texas, how do you like that game last night?
It finished well for me.
For you, sure. All right, well, thanks, folks. We look forward to, you're going to be here till Thursday, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, we look forward to, hopefully the people you're meeting with are going to represent well. I just know they will, and we'll look forward to that report, maybe some help along the way. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, we are moving on to number five. Do we do the consent?
Oh, excuse me.
Consent number four, the consent agenda, your motion. So is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. On number five is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. There's two hundred dollar gift from Thomas and Timothy Purcell to the fire department and twelve hundred dollars from AAA also to the fire department for fire safety vests. So with those, I'll take a resolution to accept those donations.
So moved.
Second, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number six, resolution adopting stormwater management fees. Mitch, welcome.
Thank you. Um.
Are you shooting a hostage video, Mitch?
What's that?
Are you shooting a hostage video or?
I'm actually in my daughter's toilet right now. Love it. But I got thrown in here kind of at the last minute. So bear with me here as I try and stumble through some of these items that Stephen had for the agenda. The first one being the stormwater utility rates. I believe that a previous work session, it was recommended to increase rate by a dollar fifty for residential properties from four dollars to five fifty. And that would also be a thirty-seven point five percent increase for commercial properties. And these, these funds are generated and we use these for stormwater improvements and reporting requirements from the NPCA.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. Looking for resolution, I have number six. So moved. Second, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number seven is resolution approving an airport maintenance and operation agreement with MnDOT. Mitch?
So airports are a place where I'm not as familiar, but from my understanding, MnDOT provides a lot of funding for the maintenance and the costs that we have at the airport. So we're eligible for up to seventy-five percent of the eligible, eligible costs or around fifty-one thousand dollars a year. So this is just an agreement with them to continue that agreement. And, you know, one thing that we've done is finished up the LED conversion for some of the runway lights. So that'll save us some on, on utility bills over the next few years, and that'll free up more, more money to do other repairs and work out at the airport.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for Mitch? If not, looking for resolution, I have number seven. So move the resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you, Mitch. Hope you have toys to keep you busy in that room. You've got a couple more items here. I have number eight, resolution approving the project agreement for the Highway one oh five, Twelfth Street, Southwest project with MnDOT. Mitch?
Yeah, so MnDOT has Highway one oh five or Twelfth Street Southwest planned for a Millen overlay project in the summer of twenty twenty-two. So next summer, the project will go from the Turtle Creek Bridge on Twelfth Street South all the way to the Iowa border. And on these MnDOT projects, we have, there are some, things are done on the project that are our responsibility to pay for. In this case, we are getting header ramp improvements, some flashing beacons, just like the ones that we installed at high school this year. And with these projects, there's always some utility work, like manhole adjustment that will be taking place. So our total estimated cost from MnDOT is sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifteen cents. So it's, we entered to an agreement to pay for these items on the project.
Okay, council, any questions or comments?
Thank you for the crossing by South Gate. I know that's going to be a huge improvement there. That neighborhood's definitely looking forward to.
I agree. Thank you. Looking for resolution, I have number eight.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number nine is resolution approving the Twenty-first Avenue Northeast and Eleventh Street Prescriptive Easement. Mitch?
So earlier this summer, we brought to you kind of some concepts for the Twenty-first Avenue Northeast project. This is right on the south side of Todd Park. And so we have a federal grant for this project for four hundred thousand dollars. And there's no such thing as free money. So when you get a federal grant, you have to do all, all sorts of paperwork to get the grant dollars in your pocket. And part of that is saying, certifying the right of way, saying that you own all the land, where you're going to do this work on, on the project. And so we've been working with Bolton Bank, a consultant, on establishing some of that right of way, making sure that everything is good to go. We ran into a little bit of a questionable area, and I'll turn it over to Craig Byram, since he dealt with this quite a bit. But essentially, we are through, through Craig's memo here, we're establishing the right of way in the area that the project will be taking place. So I'll let Craig kind of explain a little more from here.
Fair. Thanks, Mitch. Mr. Byram?
Thank you. The, the statutory authority that governs this issue states that if you have a public road that is constructed and used by the public for a period of six years, it becomes a dedicated road right of way. The, the issue here is common, especially in areas that were annexed into the city when they were existing township roads. Because townships historically were notorious about building roads but not documenting where they were located or recording any documents to establish their rights to be there. So what this document is, or this resolution that I'm asking the council to approve tonight, is, is really just a historical factual statement of the evidence that we have that these roads have existed for more than six years. As you can see, we've traced aerial photographs back, you know, many, many decades showing these roads existed in their locations. And we're just simply passing this so we can record that document so that we have something to point to in the title record that shows that we own these rights of way and have the right to build a road there. Then we'll turn our attention to the federal government and the grant certification process and point to these documents as our proof that we have the right to build a road where we want to build the road. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for throwing us on this. Council, questions, comments? All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Looking for resolution, I have number nine. So moved. Second, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. Moving on, I have number ten, approving a contract with SCH for airport rezoning. Mitch?
So this one's a little out of my wheelhouse, but I'll kind of summarize as best I can here. So from my understanding, there's been some work done in the mid-two thousands at the airport to expand the runway. But during that timeframe, the zoning for the airport wasn't updated. So we are going to be working with SCH to rezone the airport to make things up to current standards. And it looks like the Um, and it looks like the project cost is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars with seventy percent being funded by the state and thirty percent being funded out of our local airport construction fund.
All right. Thank you, Mitch. Council, any questions or comments? If not, looking for resolution. I have number ten.
So move.
Second, okay, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Bishuista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mitch. Uh, I have number eleven is approving an amendment to the grant agreement for the construction of a public television station. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor members. Due to several factors, KSMQ has requested modification of two provisions that were part of our grant agreement. Now we've included those in as exhibit one. This is related to the construction of the new public television station. Two items that they've requested is move the completion date from February, February twenty-eighth of twenty-two to December thirty-first of twenty-two. And then adjust the project cost by amount of three, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Those costs will be borne by KSMQ. Council actions requested approve those modifications and they'll go through the deed process and gain the state's signature approvals as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Council, any questions? If not, with resolution, I have number eleven. So moved for a second. Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Bishuista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number twelve is resolution granting a transfer of an on sale liquor license to Quattro Copas Bar and Lounge LLC. And welcome.
Well, thank you. Um, this is a transfer from Quattro Copas Bar to Quattro Copas Bar and Lounge LLC. So right now bar shut down as they do this transfer of ownership. So we're getting them approval for their new license.
Council, questions? If not, with resolution. So moved. For a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Bishuista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number thirteen is resolution adopting Minnesota statute section two seven, two point one six two to enforce parcel transfer and division restrictions. Holly?
Uh, mayor and council members, you probably have noticed that we're doing a lot more minor subdivisions lately. Um, part of the reason for that is that the county has adopted a, the county recorder has adopted an application process um, so that we, um, we actually can, um, and then they voluntarily would give us notice um, at the city level of, of these minor splits and subdivisions. However, they, uh, they did not require actual approval of the subdivisions. It was really mostly courtesy to the city and in that event it ended up at times having, uh, things recorded that were not compliant with our ordinance or subdivisions. Um, so we are responsible for the planning and zoning activities which promote the health, safety and welfare of the city. Um, as part of that responsibility, the city has adopted subdivision ordinance which regulates divisions and transfers of property um, within the city boundaries and extraterritorial area. On the recorder and auditor are responsible for recording such transfers and divisions and assigning tax identification numbers to the parcels. Um, and then that, once they received that information, they felt that by law they were required just to record the documents if they were in the correct format. Um, even though they might end up as noted earlier, um, in a, a form that's not usable by the property owner or is illegal based on our ordinance and subdivision requirements. In a different conversations that we've had with the county to try to iron this out, um, we came up with adopting this statute two seventy-two point one six two, which would require that Mar County not process or record any subdivision located in the city on that has not received city approval. With this authority, um, we can protect landowners again from transfers and division missteps, uh, that would block them from using land as they intended. Um, and this also did actually apply to my counterpart with the county, um, the county, uh, the county planner as well. So they're also doing a similar subdivision, uh, or also doing a similar resolution with the county recorder's consent. So we're just asking that you approve the attached resolution.
All right, council, questions for Holly? Holly, does this, so you said within the city and the extraterritorial area, can you describe what that is?
Um, the city would be, the city limit would be our city boundaries and the extraterritorial area is two miles extending outside the city limits. We're still kind of working out how, um, how to enforce our subdivision um, requirements within that two mile area. We obviously work with the county planner. Um, and we're talking about maybe, um, working on some kind of joint planning board, but that's still something that we have to, um, figure out in the future.
Okay, that was sort of my question. So this resolution doesn't necessarily touch on that. There's still more work to be done as far as that area that's near the city, but not quite within our city limits. Is that the case?
Well, from a practical perspective, um, yes, but at least the, the city and the county, the city planner and the county planner would have to review a subdivision before it could be recorded. And once it's recorded, then it can be sold potentially, you know, with these defects that are allowing people to use property as they intended. So we're trying to prevent some missteps that have been, that have happened recently.
Any other questions for Holly?
Holly, any downside from, I mean, does it raise costs or time for local, you know, landowners as they're selling property or anything like that, or essentially no impact and this just make sure we follow the right process?
Well, at this time we have to run all of our minor subdivisions through the council. Um, so it does take extra time. Um, but I mean, on the other end of it, um, I guess if, if people are aware of the requirement, they can certainly contact us in, um, in advance, you know, of when they want to close on their property. The other, you know, if that's an issue, if they're actually doing a transfer, um, it doesn't require a transfer um, in order to do a split or a combination necessarily depending, it could be your own property that you're combining two lots or splitting a lot. Um, when we do our zoning code update, we are, um, going to build in and you'll find out more about that soon, hopefully. Um, a more of an administrative process for doing splits that are very simple. So it'd be something that would just require approval on a staff basis, um, something more complicated than would only have to go to council. So it could be very quickly done once we adopt, uh, our new zoning code update.
Yeah, I'd just add that, um, we had a split that was done that is not in conformance with our city ordinance. So I have to try to unpackage that later. We'll actually save us time in the long run if we do it right the first time, so to speak. So I think effectively while there's another hoof to jump through, it saves everybody time in the long run. Makes sense.
And, and it could save the, I was just going to say it could, it could protect the property owner from lawsuit from someone they might sell property to that now they can't get a building permit for the structure that's on the property because they're not conforming. You know, or, um, they might be subject to, you know, criminal prosecution from us as a city or violating our ordinance, which, you know, depends on how we want to pursue that, but.
Joyce, you have something?
Uh, the split that was done that you were just talking about Craig that was in nonconformance. How was it in nonconformance? Was that approved by like the county and then it didn't follow ours or how?
It had a accessory structure, um, on an individual lot, which we don't allow.
Okay, accessory structure?
Mm-hmm. So.
Do you want me to tell the whole, the story Craig?
I think I may have talked to them on the phone today.
Okay.
I think so.
Yeah, the individual asked me in advance if the split was allowed. I told him it was not. Um, he wanted to, he owns property across the street from another property with a, he owns a rental property across from his home, essentially. That property has a house and a big garage and he wanted to sell the house and keep the garage. But we don't allow a split where there's just an accessory structure on the parcel. He also did create two parcels that do not, do not conform with our minimum lot size. So they're not buildable lots. And once they become nonconforming, you won't be able to get building permits or repair of those structures. So they, he's in a bit of a bind right now. Um, having, having.
I guess I just don't understand how it, how did it happen? How did it get this far is what I'm trying to understand.
Right. So the county believes that they by law have to record a document that's in the correct format without additional approvals from the subdivision authority, whether that be me or my counterpart in the county. Um, with this resolution, they would not even accept your documents if you didn't have approval from the city or the county subdivision authority. Whereas without this resolution, they will accept anything that has the right size paper with the right, you know, signatures and they will record it because they don't know, you know, what the law has been. They, they do put on their application that they should check with us, but that doesn't mean that we have to approve it.
That makes sense.
Well, thank you for that explanation, Holly. Any other questions for Holly? Otherwise, look for resolution adopting. I have number thirteen. So moved.
Second, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Bishuista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six nothing, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Holly, I'm a, I'm assuming you're on to us that the council took a little extra time with you tonight with questions, hoping that we could hear your dogs ring the bell.
One is gated in one room and another one is outside. So.
Very good. Yes, good for you. We missed Phil though.
Yeah.
I have number fourteen is resolution declaring the property eight oh seven ninth street northeast a hazardous structure. Do you make resolution? Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
Aye.
Bishuista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number fifteen is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract and remove junk and or illegally stored vehicles at one oh six eleventh street northeast, the Nelson property. Your motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There any citizens wishing to address the council that wasn't on the agenda? Or on Zoom?
Hello?
Elaine, you have something?
Hi, yes, thank you, um, your honor and council members. It's nice to see you from afar. Um, I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that we are planning to do this second annual Austin winter extravaganza with the lighting contest and the Santa visit and I'm very excited.
How do you say that? How do you say extravaganza, Elaine?
Extravaganza. It's a wonderful.
It's good. We'll work on that.
Uh, and actually, thank you again, um, to your honor, the mayor who has agreed to be one of our judges for the lighting contest. And we hope to have a lot of residential, commercial properties for you to look at. We'll have the two divisions and we'll be awarding prizes. Of course, the mayor's choice, people's choice and the Clark Briswold. So I'm looking forward to seeing lots of lights up at, uh, all around Austin again, celebrating the holidays. And helping our good friends, I guess, enjoy the whole spirit of the season.
Thank you, Elaine.
Uh, we're going to have the Santa visit at the fairgrounds on Friday, uh, December third from four to eight. And we opted to do it on a Friday so that people have lots of time on Saturday and Sunday to shop in Austin. So thank you very much for your support.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, honorary council member, I, I watched Chris Heikle. I'm sure you all did in action when the food came here. She did her job and tapped Tom on the shoulder. That's leadership, Chris, right there. Thank you for that. Any comments do you have today?
Good.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you for serving as honorary council member. Uh, under reports and recommendations, uh, or, uh, yes, Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Also, we have coming next week, the Velocity Group, November ninth at noon to one. We have council scheduled to, to meet with him. Hopefully that works in your schedule. If you could let me know and confirm that that, that works for you, that'd be great. And like to have as best showing as we can for council members and the mayor for that. We did, uh, kind of a item of interest and maybe a frustration too, we posted for a patrol position. Unfortunately, our applications were down considerably and just one candidate for two open positions right now. So we're looking at some options as far as that's concerned, uh, to help us. It's not an Austin only problem. This is many challenges across the state. Um, but we are looking into that with significant concern on how we move forward to try to boost the number of applicants that we would see for patrol. So I wanted to pass that along to the public and the council. Okay, that's all I have.
Any city departments have anything?
I don't know.
All right, Paul?
Nothing, your honor.
Jason?
Nothing, your honor.
Yeah.
Nothing, your honor.
Rebecca?
Nothing, your honor.
Mikey?
Uh, thanks to everyone who was involved. It was, uh, yesterday was a great opportunity. I was fortunate enough to be able to part of the Austin Symphony Orchestra's concert. It's the first time we've been able to do it in six hundred and sixteen days.
Whoa.
Uh, and it was just kind of great to be back. Thanks to the city for their support and there's many great supporters and it was just great to have an audience. Nolton is a wonderful place. The acoustics are great and there's lots of room for social distancing.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Joyce?
I just want to say that I think it's, um, a fantastic idea to honor, uh, Bonnie Reitz with, uh, naming the conference room after her and whoever said that she leads with energy, enthusiasm and professionalism, that nailed it. That nailed Bonnie Reitz. It's just sums her up. So congratulations to her. She's well deserved.
Right on. Yes, more to come when that, uh, sign gets posted and we do rename that. We'll have a little celebration on that. I just want to, uh, close by saying it is, it's amazing that every item on the agenda requires such knowledge and, and, and experience and our city staff continues to nail every bit of these little nuances that come up and, and kind of rear their head late in the game and, and, and also the, we're also ahead of the game even with some of these CRE, you know, uh, folks coming to town. So we're, we're addressing what needs to be addressed, but it, it, it requires such expertise that it's amazing that our city staff, they're so knowledgeable and I really appreciate everything they do. So they never are, they never have a question going answered. It's just, it's just great to see. So uh, with that, we'll take a five minute break after we adjourn for the work sessions. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to November fifteenth. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll just five minutes and we'll stay up here and there's, I guess Jimmy John's sub to eat. Help yourself. Hey, Craig? Are we leaving this on?
I would hope so.
Really, we're leaving that one on, but taking this one off?
I don't know.
Yes.
This one.